Notice requirement provided for the open public meeting law has been satisfied. Notice is properly given, said notice haven't been transmitted to the Carrion News and Star Ledger on Wednesday, January 9th, 2019, as well as posting on the Rulento Board in the City Clerk's office. May I have a roll call? Councilmember Somadi?
Yes.
Davis?
Present.
Good?
Present.
McCray?
Present.
Soren Chapsdorn, roll call. Vice President Hockaday?
Present.
Council President Mills-Ransum?
Present.
Yes, Dixon is present in the form.
Please rise for the pledge of allegiance and remain standing for the invocation.
(Inaudible) to the right of the United States of America and to the Republic for which he stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Humbly we ask God, the giver of peace and the lover of charity, to give the entire family of nations true agreement with his will and to grant the light of his spirit on all those who work for justice and peace. Amen.
May I have a motion to approve the venus of the regular meeting? So moved.
Second.
Others in favor?
Aye.
Are there any communications from the mayor?
Yes, Madam President. His honor the mayor, Agent Almapp, has submitted the following nominees for advice and consent from the governing body. Lisa Burgess, the Plainfield Police Director, and Myra Coretta, Senator Drew Data, for the Plainfield Shake Tree Commission.
Are there any ceremony matters?
No, that is fine.
We do have some unfinished business. A public hearing on the 2019 Plainfield Municipal Introduce Budget has been scheduled for this evening. May I have a motion to open the floor for a public hearing on the 2019 Plainfield Municipal Introduce Budget as advertised?
So moved.
May I have a second? The floor is now open. Seeing no one come to the mic, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Okay, the public hearing is now closed. Consideration of public hearing, second reading and final passage. Clerk, please read MC 2909 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2019-09 is the ordinance adopting amendment and restated redevelopment plan for the Todd North Avenue redevelopment area, and is hereby certified that notice of public hearing and this ordinance was published in the Carrion News on Tuesday, April 16, 2019.
The floor is now open for any member of the public who would like to speak on this May I have a motion to close the public hearing on this one?
So moved.
Second. May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law.
So moved.
May I have a roll call? I'm sorry, motion, sir.
So moved.
Second. May I have a roll call?
Councilmember Somadi?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Mills-Ransum?
Yes.
This ordinance is adopted on second reading and final passage.
Clerk, please read MC 2019-10 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2019-10 is the ordinance adopting amendment and restated redevelopment plan for the Todd South Avenue redevelopment area, and is hereby certified that notice of a public hearing and this ordinance was published in the Carrion News on Tuesday, April 16, 2019.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this May I have a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance?
So moved.
Second. Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmember Somadi?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Mills-Ransum?
Yes.
This ordinance is adopted on second reading and final passage.
Clerk, please read MC 2019-11 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
MC 2019-11 is an ordinance providing for special emergency appropriation. We have mounted onto the seat $200,000 to fund preparation of a master plan for the city of Plainfield. It is hereby certified that notice of a public hearing and this ordinance was published in the Carrion News on Tuesday, April 16, 2019.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this ordinance. May I have a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance?
So moved.
Second. May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law.
So moved.
Second. May I have a roll call?
Councilmember Somadi?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Mills-Ransum?
Yes.
This ordinance is adopted on second reading and final passage.
Clerk, please read Bond 1267 by title and further certify that the ordinance has complied with all statutory publication requirements.
Bond 1267 is a bond ordinance provided for various 2019 capital acquisitions and improvements by and in the city of Plainfield and the County of Union State, New Jersey, appropriating $3,500,000, therefore authorized the issuance of $3,325,000. Bonds are notes to the city to finance part of the cost thereof. It is hereby certified that notice of a public hearing and this ordinance was published in the Carrion News on Tuesday, April 16, 2019.
The floor is now open to any member of the public who would like to speak on this May I have a motion to close the public hearing on this ordinance?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion to adopt this ordinance on second reading and final passage, and if adopted, the ordinance shall be published as required by law.
So moved.
Second. Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmember Somadi?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Mills-Ransum?
Yes.
This ordinance is adopted on second reading and final passage.
A total of 30 minutes has been allocated for public comments, limited to resolutions and ordinance since being considered this evening. If you wish to be heard, please give your name and address to the clerk for the record. Each speaker will be given three minutes. The floor is now open. May I have a motion to close public comments?
So moved.
Second. Public comments are now closed. Clerk, will you please read the consent agenda this evening?
Madam President, the consent agenda has been identified as R 16019 through R 16819, and R 17419 through R 18019, and R 18719 through R 19719.
May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
Second. Clerk, may I have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Somadi?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good? McCray?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Mills-Ransum?
Yes.
The consent agenda is approved.
Clerk, will you please read the remaining resolutions?
Resolution R 169-19 is granting advice and consent to the appointment of Lisa Burgess.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
And roll call.
Councilmember Somadi?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Mills-Ransum?
Yes.
Resolution is approved. Resolution. 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 Question. Okay, I think that's all my questions.
Anything else?
Yes.
Okay. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Any abstentions?
What? Council President, I'm going to do a roll call on this one.
You want to do a roll call, okay.
It's a roll call on R 17319. Councilmembers Somadi?
Yes.
Davis?
No.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Mills-Ransum?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Resolution R 18119 requests no authorization to come with funds from the UEZ general funding account.
Council President, I have a question on this resolution.
Yes, may I?
I just want clarification on why the allocation for the pedestrian mall was moved from the grant funding to the UEZ budget?
Sure, I can answer that. Again, this amount of, that is, on the disresolution is not 100% for the pedestrian mall plaza project. We're still looking for the federal funding that we have, and this is just to match the federal funding that we have.
Any questions? Do you make a roll calls?
It's a roll call on Resolution R 18119. Councilmembers Somadi?
Yes.
Davis?
No.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Mills-Ransum?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Resolution R 18219 is authorizing award of professional service contract to CNE Associates.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Seconded.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Resolution R 18319 is authorizing a Plainfield CFO to cancel $300,000 from a DuBarry Associates contract.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Resolution R 18419 is authorizing a release of a performance guarantee for the construction of a remote bank ATM.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Resolution R 18519 is authorizing award of professional service contract to Mission Group LLC.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions?
Resolution R 18619 is accepting the proposal of Barton Ross and Partners LLC.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? New items. Madam President, uh, wait, you clerk.
Madam President, we have a new item identified as R 19819, which is a council matter of resolution granting the use of city-owned property lots number 8 and 8A to conduct the outdoor multicultural festival, and a motion will require to add this item to the agenda for consideration.
Okay. May I have a motion to add R 19819 to the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
You have them now adopted.
To adopt, okay. I will now entertain a motion to adopt R 19819.
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Madam President, we have another new item identified as R 19919, which was a resolution amending the allocation of funds for the award of professional service contracts for Nonian Associates Incorporated for the North Avenue, the other pedestrian mall improvements. And a motion will require to add this item to the agenda for consideration.
May I have a motion to add?
So moved.
R 19919 to the agenda?
So moved.
May I have a second?
Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? I will now entertain a motion to adopt R 19919.
So moved. Seconded.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Let's do a roll call.
Roll call on Resolution R 19919 is councilmembers Somadi?
Yes.
Davis?
No.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Mills-Ransum?
Yes.
Resolution is approved.
Introduction of ordinance is our first reading. We now have the ordinance our first reading. Clerk, will you please read ordinance MC 2019-12 by title?
MC 2019-12 is an ordinance authorizing the execution of a financial agreement with IC Development Urban Renewal LC in granting the tax exemption with respect to affordable housing project commonly known as the Allenell Apartments, and identified on the city's tax map as block 105, block 1, block 701, block 1, and block 215, lot 2.
Council President, I have a question on this ordinance.
Are there any questions in the council?
Yes. Of course.
So I have two questions. The first question is, have we ever given a pilot to a property after they were given a pilot?
Yes, we have.
And then my second question is, if this ordinance didn't pass for some reason, what would be the ramifications of that?
The property will become a vacant and abandoned property, and we will have to coordinate removal of all the residents from that complex.
May I have something, Council President?
Yes.
Yeah, man. One of the things that my administration has tried, one of the things that we have tried to do and that we will continue to do is to make sure that we provide decent quality of affordable housing to the people of the city who need decent housing. And without this, it would not be possible for those who now live in these apartments to continue to improve their quality of life. And so the investment that is being made will certainly help to make that possible. And so the administration takes great pleasure in presenting this for your consideration.
Any other questions, counsel?
I should add, it's a $3 million investment that had been made into this property, and it's a great investment.
Any other questions, counsel? Thank you, ma'am. Okay. I will now entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
So moved. Seconded.
Okay. Clerk, may I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Somadi?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Mills-Ransum?
Yes.
This ordinance is adopted on first reading.
Clerk, will you please read ordinance MC 2019-13 by title?
MC 2019-13 is an ordinance to amend and supplement Chapter 2, Administration, Article 15, Office of the City Clerk, Section 2, creating Section 2:15-3, a municipal code establishing the city flag and regulating the use of the city flag.
Are there any questions from the council? I will now entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance on first reading.
So moved.
Second?
Seconded.
May I have a roll call?
Councilmembers Somadi?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Mills-Ransum?
Yes.
This ordinance is adopted on first reading.
Clerk, will you please read ordinance MC 2914 by title?
MC 2019-14 is an ordinance granting type 39 jurisdiction to the city of Plainfield over roads and parking lots located at a property known as 926-1018 North Avenue, block 402, block 7, shown on the Plainfield City Tax Map Sheet 17, zoning board application
Are there any questions from the council?
Yes.
If I could just have further clarifications on what this ordinance exactly does and what's the public benefit for this ordinance?
Counsel President, so, Chapter 39, what it does, it allows our police department force to be able to enforce vehicle traffic violations in a private parking lot. So both for MC 2914 and MC 2915 as well. So the public purpose is that, you know, if anybody goes into the parking lot and is not following the traffic ordinance, the police are able to go in that parking lot and enforce traffic ordinance.
Okay, so for MC 2019-15, the parking lot isn't that big, so what exactly would the police be enforcing there?
If there's a motor vehicle accident, somebody gets into an accident, we have jurisdiction to wait to stop. Basically, on private property, we can't wait for a vehicle to stop if it's an accident. That's one example. In addition, if you don't have your car registered, we can tell them. In addition, if you don't have proper insurance, you can get a ticket for it.
It would essentially be anything that falls under Title 39, which would be moving violations, parking, you know, matters, anything, any law that involves enforcement of the traffic statutes and ordinances.
Do we have this in other private properties around the city?
Yes, yes, we do.
So I guess my question is, why would we want to have jurisdiction in a private, on private property?
Well, it depends on the facility and the different areas of the lot. If somebody gets into a motor vehicle accident in a lot such as your car, if there's a problem, sure, you go and properly investigate, and you might want someone to issue it. So it gives us latitude to open up our investigations, to have a little bit more fairness, to be able to enforce the law.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I will now entertain a motion to adopt this witness on first reading.
So moved.
Seconded. Okay. Roll call, please.
Roll call on MC 2019-14. Councilmembers Somadi?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Mills-Ransum?
Yes.
This ordinance is adopted on first reading.
Will you please, will you please read ordinance MC 2019-15 by title?
This, uh, MC 2019-15 is an ordinance granting type 39 jurisdiction to the city of Plainfield over roads and parking lots located at a property known as 109-121 East Fourth Street, block 840, block 701, shown on the Plainfield City Tax Map Sheet 91, zoning board application 2012-33.
Are there any questions from the council?
Yes.
So for that, I guess my question is more of a public works question. When are we going to enforce, like, the parking lot over there isn't even completed, but yet we're gonna enforce the ordinance that says the police have jurisdiction over a parking lot that's not even being used? So is there a way that we can speed up the process so the residents of that building can use that parking lot?
The process has already...
I don't, whatever we can do to get the property owner to even complete the parking lot for residents to even use it, because right now this ordinance is useless if nobody's even using that parking lot.
Well, the ordinance wouldn't be useless, but yes, whatever has to be done from a public work standpoint will address.
I will now entertain a motion to adopt this witness on first reading.
So moved. Seconded.
May I have a roll call, please?
Council members, Amati?
Yes.
Davis?
Yes.
Good?
Yes.
McCray?
Yes.
Vice President Hockaday?
Yes.
Council President Mills Ransome?
Yes.
This ordinance is adopted on first reading. And a public hearing on all of these ordinance will take place at the next combined meeting of the Plainfield City Council on Monday, June seventeenth, two thousand nineteen.
Thank you. Uh, before I go into general comments, I'd like to ask the members of the council to introduce your C B A member once again. We were supposed to have resolutions tonight, and they're not ready. We've apologized already, but they will get them. But if your person is here, would you recognize them and have them stand, and we do want to appoint them again for bringing this budget? Work together.
I'll go first. Mine was the Budget Chair, Ms. Valerie Ellis.
My representative, Tony Stephanie McNeil.
My representative was Twisha Rogers.
My representative was Juan Velasquez.
My representative is not present, but it was Cheyenne Andrews.
We are really grateful to you, and I'm also seeing that the mayor wants to speak.
Well, thank you, Council President. I have sat on this council since nineteen ninety-eight, and I have seen many reports from different C B A committees, and I must say to you, the members who served this year, that the report that you provided to the governing body was very comprehensive, very, a lot of work went into it. Your recommendations were well received, and I commend you for the job that you did. It's one of the best C B A reports that I have seen, that I've heard since being an elected member here in the city of Plainfield, both as a member of the governing body as well as the mayor of the city. So I want to thank you for the work and for your dedication. Thank you.
Thank you. General comments. A total of sixty minutes has been allocated for all public comments to be presented. If you wish to be heard, please give your name and address to the clerk for the record. The amount of time any single speaker is allowed will be limited to five minutes. The floor is now open.
Good evening, Joyce Briggs, Residence Press, Briggs, excuse me, nine seven two Oakland Avenue, thank you, Plainfield, New Jersey. I'm here, uh, as a business owner, uh, Thursday, late Thursday, my business, excuse me, is located on Fifth Street, uh, directly across the street from City Hall, on the Fifth Street right side. I saw on Thursday that the city was doing something with the meters and taking the meters out. We thought maybe they were gonna do a kiosk of some sort to allow for parking. Uh, I was not in the area on Friday. This morning, when I returned, I found that the city allocated on the north end side of Fifth Street all for city parking. The business owners didn't get any notice of that. Um, I have, I'm here on behalf of myself as a business owner, as well as the beauty supply store, excuse me, salon. It's a, um, gentleman, an elderly gentleman owns a beauty supplies salon. A salon. And a lot of his clients are very elderly. I mean, I see myself then having difficulty getting out of cars. Um, I just think it's just really not considerate of the business owners as well as our customers that the city would allow that side of the street to be taken up for the city vehicles. The city has a parking lot of the building that I'm, that I'm a tenant in also has a parking lot, and for upwards of about two years was going through back and forth with, uh, the city to try and determine how many spaces were gonna be allowed. The building owner complied fully. There's landscaping, it's probably one of the most beautiful parking lots in the city of Plainfield, with gated electronic gate. But the point of why I'm here today, it's just I think that it's very unfair that the city did not notify any of the business owners that those parking spaces were being taken. Um, again, I know it's gonna affect my business, I'm sure it's gonna affect the, um, other five businesses located in that short period of time. That leaves us basically with six public parking spaces for businesses, for parking spaces for businesses, and our clients, our employees and clients. Um, I'm here by myself only because I've learned of this meeting just there, but I'm sure, and I know Barson Gravler, he is on his way from New Brunswick. We recently learned of the meeting, and the owner of the salon, who I think is probably the biggest concern that we have because of his clients, and the fact that I know he has some handicap clients that need closed parking lot. And I just think it's just an incon- it's very inconsiderate, and I'd ask that somebody take on, respected the council, to look into this. Another note, um, because we've all been in that block for about twenty-seven, I've been there twenty-seven years, Jimmy's been there thirty-five years. Another one of the employees for the firm on the corner is handicapped. Um, just as a courtesy, all of us, we leave that first spot for him. I mean, anyone can take the spot, it's public parking, we understand that. But we leave that spot for him, we leave the next spot for Jimmy because he's older, and then try to leave within our own ability, just as a circle of neighborhood businesses for some of his elderly clients. So, again, the city taking that line on the other side is really gonna interfere. And I noticed that the city has a parking lot to park its city cars, and even today, I noticed that there were three inspection cars that were there parked in that same spot when I came in the morning and are still there now. And so, I'm just asking that someone from the council take that on to look on, because, again, I believe it's gonna affect my business a little bit, but I'm, again, really concerned with the salon next door and his senior citizens. And I think it would really be unfair. I know, obviously, something's going on with all the city's purchasing of new vehicles, and maybe, you know, you need more spots, but maybe if the city's parking lot could be slanted to allow for more spaces, it would be helpful and considerate, again, so. It's a little rushed, but I found out about the meeting, I wanted to make sure I did it, because I don't want to go through the normal, just send a letter, because, again, the first priority is Jimmy, and, uh, so I wanted to come on behalf of myself, but more so him. And during the next meeting, I'm sure when they get a little bit noticed, I'm sure there'll be several more of the business owners here as well as their clients, because, again, he's been there in excess of thirty years. I've been here twenty-seven years, Barson Gravler's been here thirty years, so. Okay, thank you very much.
Hello, everybody. Sorry. My name is Willie Robinson. This is my second attempt to try to get a no parking sign taken, uh, from, from, in front of my house. Uh, last time I came here, I told you guys that I just refuse to let my daughter have to park two blocks away for her safety, you know what I mean? At night when she comes to work, because she can't find where to park. Um, like I said, I've been living in my house for twenty-five years, I own my house for twenty-five years, and we've always been able to park on both sides. And like I said, for me, it's a matter of safety for my daughter. Since this happened, since they put those signs up, I even had to help her pay five tickets. Because like I said, I refuse to let her park away from my house. I'm not gonna let that happen, like I told you guys before. Now, I, I, I took a few, I mean, I took a little tour of the city, and just on Hillside, uh, Chatwin, Martini, most of those people have driveways, and they're able to park on both sides. I measured the street, the street is twenty-five and a half. My street is over thirty, thirty-two, uh, feet. So I know it's a safety issue, but why, why isn't, isn't it a safety issue for those who live up in the hills there? It's not right. Even in front of the mayor's family house, you have a, uh, park by permit only. All it matters for is a compromise. Allow us to park there between nine, nine in the morning, give my daughter a chance to park there, and get her butt to work at nine o'clock, and I'll be happy. That's all it matters. So I'm, I'm, thank you for your talk.
Sir, could you state your address?
Oh, sorry. Three two nine Franklin Place, Plainfield, New Jersey. Been there twenty-five years, had no problem with parking. Since you guys put that sign up, it's really putting a hardship on the people in that area. The other day, um, you got people parking from Seventh Street, parking on the one side that we can park on. And we can't go into, hey, man, you can't park there, because it's a public street. It's not right, it's not fair. Okay, so that's all it matters. Maybe we can come to a compromise, change the hours or something for us. Thank you. Congratulations.
Johnny Pritchard, formerly of seven two three Orange that are at Plainfield, now four oh one zero, Bruce Evan Garwood. Several things I'd like to address the city council on. We need to re-increase funding for the Public, Plainfield Public Library. We cannot afford any cuts at all, especially when, especially when students will be out of school there in the summer. They'll need the library for studies and research and things of that nature. We cannot afford to cut library service at all, and I think the members of the council should realize this. Secondly, this is month, uh, this is May. It's a month. In two weeks, there'll be veteran, uh, Memorial Day. We will remember those who gave their lives fighting for our country. Sixteen of Plainfield's sons that gave their lives during the war in Vietnam. Those who survived and came back, they were called Nazis, murderers, baby killers. I'd like that word Nazi to be retired once and for all. It's just, that word Nazi is just as bad as other than murders, which of course I will not use. The poor brave soldier there, the spies, don't count as a stranger. Remember whose country stay in day and hour danger. And lastly, we need to react to a mule and bird. We need to have that hospital back ASAP, because this city needs it, the surrounding communities need that. We need a hospital that is capable of mission. We need a hospital that we can count on to help, and to help us if we're injured or sick. What if an unknown one of the tech occurs? We'll need that hospital very, very badly. The sooner we react to a mule and bird, the better off we all will be. Don't let this unfair.
Seeing no one else coming to the mic, may I have a motion to close? Probably ran out of picture.
Good evening, folks. My name is William Horace. This is someone, the attorney on Watchon and East Fifth. And, uh, first of all, I want to say I love this city. I loved it from the first day I saw it, and I made a great living here. And, look, I own the building on the corner of East Fifth and Watchon. I own the building next to it, I own the parking lot next to it. And taking away that parking on the other side of the road would really hurt our businesses, all the businesses on that, on that road. I myself employ a hundred and fifteen people, and at that location, I have over forty-five people who work there. And the other thing is that I have an idea that I think would solve the problem, because I realize you need municipal parking for those vehicles. What I was thinking, instead of the cars being parked like this, why don't we park them like this? In other words, you go, you know, all, on both sides of the road, you know? In other words, and I see that, because see that one of the big problems I've noticed with that part of the road is that some cars think it's two ways, because it's wide, and it's really a one-way. I'm thinking, let's take advantage of it, let's be creative and create parking on both sides that does, I don't know what you call that, you know, but it, what is it? And if we did that, and I'm sorry, I'm a little hard of hearing, but if we did that, I think it would really create double the parking spaces on both sides of the road and help everybody out. The city would be helped, and all the, the owners would be helped. You could take two parking places, spaces, one parking space and convert it to two. So we would have double the amount of parking just if we parked the cars that way, all the way. Make it a one-way, only one car, you know, you could fit a large bus or whatever, but go right down this one-way road instead of a two-way road. And, uh, I think that'd be great. I think that's my, my input, and I thank you for your time. Okay?
Thank you. Seeing no one coming this time, may I have a motion to close comments?
Seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
May I have a motion to adjourn?
Move. Seconded.
All those in favor? We need this adjourn.